He didn't have enough room in his own, in his own driveway and he didn't want to annoy his neighbors, so he's parking it around.
All right, welcome to the Briar City Council meeting of March twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. We'll move to roll call, Councilmember Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember Crinkie.
Here.
Councilmember Lockhart.
Here.
Councilmember Marley.
Here.
Councilmember Moran.
Here.
Councilmember Nick.
Here.
And Councilman Rosman. All right, welcome everyone. Moving on to the public request and oral communications portion of the meeting. This is where citizens can address myself or the council. If you had something that you would like to say or address us with, please raise your hand. All right, one more time. This is the public request and oral communication portion of the meeting. You would like to address myself or the council with a question or comment, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on. We want to report to committees and council officials. I continue to get information with respect to our fire contract, which I know we've been discussing, gathering information about that. And I'll continue to do so. Chief, the chief's on, maybe, maybe I'll bring him in, if you could bring him in. So Washington State Legislature, Legislature has made some changes and our chief of police is familiar with that, so we'll bring him in. Okay, we're going to sync him in. As a panelist. All right, there he is. Chief, could you just address quickly what's happening with, with respect to the legislature in our state?
Absolutely. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening. It was, it's good to see you all. Uh, some, some rollbacks that I had mentioned previously are now coming into play with obviously the, some of this is not totally new from our last meeting, but the rollbacks when they were redefining what military weapons are, and that's really good for us just because it really narrowed the scope of what law enforcement, the tools that they could use. And it was really nice that prior to my arrival, I think with the sheriff's superman help and our officer Frankie Montague suggesting that we purchase these FN three oh threes that are essentially, you could think of them as pepperball guns, but they're, they're, they're more than that, they're, they're more exact, they're, they're a better platform, they're, they're more reliable. They can reach out, touch more so than a pepperball because it's more sighted in at a very narrow scope. So we were fortunate to have gone through that training last week down at Public Works and Frankie put on a, a train, a classroom training for us and then we went out to Public Works and and were able, excuse me, qualify with the weapon and I'm sitting here coughing because maybe I'm getting residual. We tested one of the, the gas balls when it hit the target and we kind of ran up there and tried to smell it and it, it, it went away, dissipated real quick, but you kind of got that little bit of a, a little bit of a choke like I just did, but then it dissipated, but but the laws redefine that so that agencies can use weapons, I shouldn't say weapons, non-lethal forms of, of options for law enforcement. And we're very fortunate to have two of them because they, now everybody wants them and they're on severe back order. So we're lucky, we have them, I think Malick Terrace has them as well as maybe Lynnwood, I could be wrong. Uh, at, at least in our geographical area. So that has been one good thing in the rollbacks. Uh, we're also seeing a lot of the, the the definitions where we used to use probable cause and now they're saying you need more, you know, don't use reasonable suspicion, it has to be probable cause, you have to be able to, to completely identify somebody that was walking away from a crime. They're starting to really loosen that up because they're finding that like, well, okay, there's a crime like a murder and those were examples that, that has had happened during these rollbacks, like down in Pierce County. There was a murder and a person that matched that description is like walking away, but we really don't have the tools anymore because you can't specifically say because you didn't witness the actual act, so you had to let that person walk. Now, I think sometimes it was a little bit extreme in the sense of you, you could have stopped and identified and maybe gotten a little bit more, but in the beginning of this legislation, there was a lot of fear. Because the fears were that if you did something against that, there was this prong and an element where the Criminal Justice Training Center, if you were found to be in violation, you would have an investigation by CJTC, the Police Academy, the, the governing of the police in the state of Washington to decertify you. And it also had a prong where if they determined that the officer did something wrong per legislation, they were going to decertify him. The chief of police of that organization would automatically be de-servied as well. Which obviously, you know, for a person of my level, I'm, I'm glad to see that, not that I don't think that our officers that we have right now would make bad decisions, but we're human. But I'm glad to see that they're, they're rolling that, that they're bringing that back a bit to help law enforcement be able to police their agencies. The, not the way that we used to, but, but with the tools and abilities and confidence that there isn't going to be somebody that's going to whack them on the back if they did something. And I don't want to say the word wrong, but the way traditional law enforcement had been doing, had been taking place and we've seen that spike, right? We've all seen the spike in crime. And I think this is why there's this big pushback to the legislators to, let's rethink these things. Let's not get rid of all of them, but let's just rethink and maybe water them down a little bit. Um, the one that I, that will likely remain, which I completely agree in is the pursuits. We all know that those are huge liability. You know, it's not like back in the day, thirty years ago, when I was a policeman, you chased somebody down for no, no tail light or no license plate light and you, you, you ran them to the ground to the very end, two counties away, right, for an infraction. So I certainly agree with the tightening and making everybody's policy the same for pursuits because that's not only going to save the liability for the citizens, for, you know, innocent bystanders, pedestrians, but as well as liability to the city when it comes to those lawsuits. So having that kind of stay in play is a really good move. And you know, the Washington Association Chief of Police, we endorse that strict guideline for pursuits. So does get a lot of traction. I think there's going to be more that comes down as legislation continues, but those are some of the highlights.
All right, thank you, chief.
Yeah.
Yeah, so several of the mayors and I expressed our concerns to our legislators about some of the new legislation and so we're happy to see them responding back. And so at this point, I mean, the chief will be back, talk about in our workshop, but any other questions for the chief from the council?
I just had a question, chief, uh, maybe partly for other council member, what's the current briar pursuit policy? I'm asking the new guys.
Sorry, turn off my radio. So, so the current briar pursuit policy is we kind of call them in a way bark. So, um, they're kind of like bark felony, so uh, murder, rape, kidnapping, R seven occupied structure, assault with a deadly weapon. And then you have that caveat. It's the DUI where you have a person that is an unacceptable risk to the community and that if you do not stop them, then likelihood is there'll be imminent risk to the community. So that's where you have these gray areas of DUI and it's specifically in the legislation. And they use the example of the DUI driver because we know how dangerous they can be on the road. We don't have to go there. We all have stories and families that have been touched by that. So those are, those are the policies. Those are the state policies and so we adhere to those.
Okay, thank you. I am glad we got some of those rollbacks, I will say.
Any other questions of the chief? All right, thank you, chief. We'll be back with you later on. Moving on. Any other reports of committees and city officials?
Mr. Mayor, I attended the Planning Commission meeting on March sixteenth.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I met yesterday with the chief.
All right.
Indeed, we did the bills.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. Approval of Briar City Council minutes of March eight, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
So we have a move, we have a motion by Gallagher, a second by Marley for the city council meeting minutes of March eight, any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 And the post saying nay. And the motion passes. All right, moving on to consent agenda. Consideration of the replacement of the vehicle for Public Works. Uh, this is for the Ford truck that we talked about in our workshop, not to exceed twenty-six thousand dollars, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Move, move by Nick.
Second.
Second by Marley. Any discussion in the motion? Again, this is an item we discussed in our workshop for Public Works. All in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
And the post saying nay. And the motion passes, thank you. All right. Second item B on consideration of a street striping bid from specialized paving. Marking the amount not to exceed eighteen thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-eight cents. I entertain a motion.
So Matt.
Moved by Councilman Rosman.
Second.
Second by Lockhart, any discussion in the motion? Once again, this is something that we workshopped. Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye.
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 And the motion passes. Moving on to new business. So tonight we have consideration of exchange of ownership for the developer extension agreement for Briar Landing. Tonight we have with us our planner Jennifer Fotherman. Fathman, I will, I will move her to a panelist. Yeah. There she is. All right, Jennifer.
Hello.
Thank you for joining the meeting. Could you just go over with the council what this is about?
Sure, that, so you may recall, uh, in twenty nineteen, we approved the subdivision on Briar Road called Briar Landing at two-two-six-one-zero Briar Road. The applicant at that time was Quantum Homes. As part of their approval for the subdivision, they needed to enter into a developer extension agreement with the city and council authorized the mayor's signature on that agreement. A few months ago, the property was sold by Quantum Homes to the new purchaser Solo Fifty-One LLC. So they've updated the developer extension agreement and provided new bonds. They, you know, updated all of their applications, but the last one to be done is for this developer extension agreement. So staff is recommending that council consider authorizing the mayor's signature on this updated agreement. There's been no change to the agreement other than the names and dates.
All right, I entertain a motion.
I'd move that we approve the change of ownership of the developer extension agreement for Briar Landing located at two-two-six-one-zero Briar Road and authorize mayor's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by Crinkie and second by Gallagher. Any discussion in the motion?
I would, I would like to ask a question about the, the bonding process. So, so this new owner will take over the property or take over responsibility. We get a bond, which I assume is going to cover us if there's damages incurred and maybe connecting to the system. If the developer runs out of money and, and abandons the project, is that bond cover us then for the, maybe the incomplete work or what happens then?
So the, my understanding is that the bond could cover us if the work needs to be done by the city. Most cases, the property would likely be sold to another developer who would pick up the work, but the bond could be used to cover any expenses. I mean, let's say they literally ran away in the middle of the night with Briar Road uncovered. Yeah, we could use those funds from the bond.
Okay.
Do just temporary stabilization. I think that's most likely what those funds would be used for because the, as I've been told by other staff, the city's not really in the business of building vaults and building.
Right.
New work centers.
Right, okay.
All right, good question. Any other questions? For discussion? All right, hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
And the post saying nay. And the motion passes. All right, item number B under new business, consideration for the Miata, second, very dwelling unit conditional use permit located on Hickory Way. I entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash zero one, located twenty-two-three-zero-one Hickory Way.
Second that motion.
Motion by Marley, second by Nick. Um, Jennifer, maybe you could explain this one a little bit for those.
Sure. We're changing the order a little bit. You've got me confused, but I can adapt. So yeah, so a cup, two years ago in twenty nineteen, the council approved, uh, three applications from the Miata's for this property at two-two-three oh one Hickory Way. It was for critical areas review and two conditional use permits, one for a secondary dwelling unit and the other for an associated septic system. So the applicant began construction and he was able to complete the septic system and start the secondary dwelling unit, but Briar municipal code limits him to two years plus a possible one-year extension and due to COVID and other issues. You know, he's been delayed in completing that, so he was required to reapply. There was a meeting at, uh, public hearing at last week at Planning Commission and they recommended approval of the conditional use permit with the same conditions that were previously applied and staff recommends that once again, council approve this conditional use permit for this property. The staff report walks through the various criteria that are in Briar Municipal Code. I'd be happy to go into those in more detail if anyone has questions, but
All right.
I think that covers it.
Thank you. Any dis, any discussion or questions?
I, I, I do have a few questions. I don't, I hate, hate getting too deep in the weeds, but one of the things I, I saw there was a, a, a letter from a, a citizen who was sort of contesting and maybe challenging the application. I understand their, their concern. In, in when, when, when the owner is listed as being required to live in the dwelling and they rent out their other dwelling to another family. What, what happens in, in our, in our code if, if the owner dies and is no longer living in the primary residence? Is, is the resident, is the renter compelled to leave or what happens to the property in, in the, 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 you know, the, the auxiliary unit at that time? And then the other thing is, is, does the owner have to be labeled as the, the deed and, and the title holder of the home? Or as the resident, or is it a trust, a family trust, which could be the, listed as the primary owner of the residence?
I don't think the code addresses any of those issues. I would think a family trust could be listed as the primary owner.
Okay, okay. And if the, and if the owner dies, then do we have to evict the, the renter or is the, is the renter allowed to stay in the property until the, the, the property is sold to a new, to owner?
Well, the owner is, even though they die, that it would still be in the possession of somebody. So it would be up to whoever is the inheritor or the state to resolve that issue. That wouldn't be a city issue to resolve.
Okay, okay. And then Jennifer, also in the, in the packet, there was a, a sort of a side margin note that says that there was some conflicting language in our code compared to what we're, we're allowing for this particular permit. Could you just remind me what, what the conflicting language is that we have to true up in our, in our Briar Municipal Code? Was that?
So in, in in the conditions for the, sorry. Right, immediately. So the definition section of our code, which now applies throughout the zoning section, has a definition that restricts the, or states that, uh, the secondary dwelling unit is for family members, guests or caretakers. But then later in the code in, uh, section nineteen twenty-four zero one zero C, there is no restriction on who can live there as long as it's, it is the property owner residing in one of the dwelling units. And then there is a conflict, so there's a bit of a conflict between that language, especially because previously the council had adopted language to remove from nineteen twenty-four zero one zero that restriction on only family members, caretakers and guests, as well as removing a restriction on rentals of the property. And then there is also a conflict with our comprehensive plan where you know, we say that leasing is to be permitted to all, you know, the general public of these units. So that's one of the updates staff has been working on is to update that section as well as to probably remove this or at least, uh, relax a bit the time limit so that applicants like Mr. Miata wouldn't run up against this problem again in terms of needing to reapply.
Okay.
One of the things that was, I remember going through this and yeah, it looks like we keep finding little spots where we had inconsistencies, still have to clean them up, but the comprehensive growth plan was really important. And if folks recall in the last month or so, some of the conversation about trying to, where the, there were proposals at the state level of, for enforcing more ADUs. But we had in order to try to stay in compliance with our comprehensive growth with plan and not get ourselves into a spot where we could be challenged, that was part of the reason for why the ADU rules, we made some adjustments to try to loosen that up a little bit, but again, you still have to have on the property uh, in one of the residences, say, uh, oh, the owner.
The owner, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion in the motion?
I looked at other code around owner occupation of one dwelling in a property with multiple dwelling units. And I noticed that some code more clearly defines what it means to be an owner occupier. And I wanted to, um, suggest that maybe we could augment that portion of our code similarly indicating the range of time per calendar year, the property would need to be occupied by the primary owner. And clarifying that it doesn't have to be the primary residence and it can be the secondary and, and so forth. Um, I think we've left a lot open here and it might be helpful to have that tightened up a little bit, but that being said, I'm comfortable with uh, the proposal here.
Thanks, Val. Did you have a certain city that you recommend that looks has?
I did, I can send it along to Jennifer.
That'd be helpful, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other discussion in the motion? Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, signal by saying aye.
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 And the post saying nay. And the motion passes, thank you. So moving on to item C, we have a vacancy on our planning commission. I, uh, met with Mr. Parsons who is a retired landscape architect and seems like a great person uh, to serve on our commission. So I would entertain a motion.
Planning Commission rep.
You're muted, Dave.
David.
There he is.
I bet I sound a lot better muted.
Soul three tones, Dave, soul three tones.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the appointment of, uh, Mr. Sean Parsons to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Position number seven, I should say.
Motion by Marley, second by Gallagher, Gallagher, any discussion in the motion? Hearing that, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 And the post saying nay. And the motion passes. All right, thank you. Item number nine, miscellaneous business. So next week is the fifth Tuesday. So Mr. Gallagher, you do, do not need to make a motion to cancel the fifth Tuesday, we will not need.
Wait.
What about the first Tuesday?
The first Tuesday of next month, we will meet. But next week, Tuesday is the fifth, so we have the meeting on.
Yeah, that, do we, do we cancel that? Do we cancel meaning that doesn't exist?
No, we don't. I'm just letting you know.
Oh, ah, okay.
You don't need a motion, all right.
We do not need a motion. Any other miscellaneous business?
Um, I did get an email from Senators Derek Stanford yesterday. Following up on, uh, on, uh, House Bill sixteen sixty, it was nice of them to get back. I probably got ahold of a few of your others, I hope.
Yep.
But you know, like you said, that bill just died in session, so that's what that ended up, so all was good.
Anything else for miscellaneous?
Will, will we convene again as a group to discuss, uh, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, the status of our, our, our fire proposal from, uh, the, uh, RFA?
Yes, multiple times. Um, information is coming in from multiple sources, South County Fire. I've been in discussions with Bothell Fire, Shoreline Fire, Fire District Seven, which is another name now, which I can't remember. So yeah, we will, uh, be more, getting more information. And I thank you, um, Councilman Moran, you sent some, some information and I've, I'm working on getting that. So I understand where you're coming from, but yes, we're lots more information with respect to our fire contract or lack thereof.
Okay, okay. I, I said just some additional information today based on a conversation I've had with, uh, the Office of the Insurance Commissioner. So, uh, yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in getting together with the group and doing some more brainstorming.
There's, there's lots more to come, obviously. It's a big deal for our city. So we need to think about all the implications, the possibilities and then the, the, the costs, so that, that's coming. We fortunately have some time, our contract doesn't end until
Yeah.
near twenty twenty-four, so we have some time, but we need to be methodical about planning and, and opening up all the possibilities, so.
Is there any just cursory information about how Mill Creek and Malik Terrace are doing with it?
Malik Terrace, um, they're right behind us. Um, Mill Creek's ahead of us. Uh, so yeah, I don't know any more than
No updates, okay.
No updates. All right, audit of accounts, Councilmember Gallagher.
I would, uh, move that we approve March twenty-twenty-two claim checks. Number four-three-five-three-three through numbers four-three-five-six-six in the amount of four-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second that motion.
We have a motion by Gallagher, a second by Nick. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing that, all in favor of the motion, saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. So at seven-twenty-nine, we're going to adjourn uh, this meeting and we're going to have a little break and then we're going to go right into the workshop agenda to talk about the Have a little break and then we're going to go right into the workshop agenda to talk about the police vehicle leasing program. So we are adjourned, thank you. All right, I'm gonna welcome us to the Briar City Council Workshop. Today, we're discussing the vehicle leasing program, our chief is with us and I'm gonna let him go first. Okay, we can see your mouth moving.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay, Paula gave me one of these really cool mics that you guys have at your your in your council chambers, so I forgot to press the button. And so I'll share my screen here in a minute. I got some information from Councilman Marley, which I I truly appreciate. It looks like he is a. PowerPoint expert.
For Excel or?
Our Excel, sorry. He is an Excel expert, that is for sure.
We're not gonna pay him anymore because he's an expert.
So I I appreciate you doing that, Mr. Marley. That's and I sent you an email. I'm not sure if he seen and then one right before council as well, just a little bit of feedback on that. So I'm gonna. Today is the mayor and I were talking about, we're, this is gonna be ongoing. This is not something that I'm hoping that we can, I mean, I would have hoped to, but nothing is as simple as this, but.
The chief has other things going on in his life here with policing. And so we we're we're, this is important discussion, but obviously providing police services is his first priority. And so tonight, we're getting more information, but yeah, we are gonna provide more later on.
Right, so this will be ongoing. Probably obviously as many work studies as it needs to for everyone to be comfortable and to whatever decision we come to. That's a, that's I support however you guys decide. So tonight, I want to kind of do some fact finding. There's some questions I know that all of you have. I want to be able to write those down. Research those, come back to you at the next work study and answer those questions. But I do have some of the questions that that I think that you want to know, plus Mr. Marley, Councilman Marley asked me some questions. That I will share with you that he had. And so let me, I'm gonna share with you his screen and when I do that. Those, one of the questions I sent to you, Councilman Marley, is that it it did appear like there was some drop off points towards the. Latter part of in twenty twenty nine for yours, so let me.
Yeah, on the purchase option?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, and I I put in the formula, so so if we purchase a car towards the end of this, these time periods. We're taking the full amount of that purchase instead of spreading it over time, so I just wanted to capture the amount within the the. Shown year and I I can maybe give a little bit better explanation on that once we look at it.
Carrie, I, can you let me screen share? It's not letting me.
You, I think you have to, you have to screen share from your officer.
Well, I tried to like before, but the host disabled me.
I think she has to give the permission.
Your permission.
Who's humming the theme to Jeopardy right now? Oh, there we go. I think it's this one. Maybe, yes. This is the one that Councilman Marley shared with me. And he kind of put both of them up there, the top one that you have seen already from last time. And then. He put this other one in contrast with one another. And I will fall on my sword and say that at the very top here. We we are doing a four year lease or I'm proposing a four year lease and I put it on a five year plan. So which skewed my numbers and so I apologize for that. And then Councilman Marley caught my air and he adjusted, so. I don't want to dive too much into these, we can a hundred percent for sure dive into these. I think that we all know that as we discussed leasing versus purchasing. You know, you're you're throwing a big pot of money, one time money right away, or you're massaging it over time. It's basically how you want to budget. And with the agencies that I've talked to and specifically Pasco PD, they lease fifty cars. From FCI.
And how big are they compared to us?
Their population about seventy five thousand. And so they have like thirty four police cars and then the rest of the police cars are detective. School Resource Officer and Command Detective Cars. So they lease basically their entire pool from FCI. And they've been doing it since nineteen ninety two, so clearly their council sees the value in. In spreading out over time versus. Making it a one time purchase. One of the things I talked to the mayor about today was, and this is all about council. Policy procedure. In my previous agencies, we had a program set up called ERNR. And basically that's replacement repair. So if we purchase a car for fifty seven thousand dollars and we say that we are going to replace that car in, let's say, four years. Out of the police department's budget is accounts for, what does that look like monthly? And at the end of that four years, you have basically saved enough money on that fifth year to purchase a new car. So some cities budget that way. We do capital improvement where we put money in and that capital improvement fund supports a lot of things. Not just police cars, but vector stuff and striping and all of these things. So there's two ways of looking at budgeting and policy and procedure. I was just talking with the mayor about when when we're specifically talking about fleets. Of one way of looking at potentially budgeting for police cars. And you can do that for, you know, the public works to, you know, all of their rigs as well. Is that if you budget and then you save, you have your set your separate ERNR fund. But I just kind of throw that out there. For leasing, as you can see, we've we spread it out over time. It doesn't hurt so much in the wallet when you purchase a car. And I think that's kind of where Councilman Marley, I was a little bit confused. And I and I like the fact that you threw in the average maintenance cost, because I think that's important. And that's based off of that twenty thousand dollar. Right now that we've put out of our pot coffers for brakes, tires, transmissions or transmission. And a lot of other various things that have gone wrong with these cars that are out of warranty. Specifically, the older cars of the fleet. So I do appreciate how you kind of just spread that over and you can just kind of show that adjustment and what maybe what would the average true cost would be. When this is the part right here, I don't know if you can see my cursor is where instead of paying for a car that's. At the seventy three mark or seventy seven, because remember there's a five percent inflator and we get over here and cars are thirty five thousand and.
Right, so I I apologize, I should have thrown a couple of comments in here, but if you click on that thirty five thousand square. You'll see in the formula bar up in the upper right or left corner. What I did is I took the total cost of the car, divided it by the five year timeframe. And then multiplied by two for the last two years shown on this spreadsheet, because we don't have a chance to. Show this over a five year period like we do with the other cars, say, for example, the ones that were purchased in twenty twenty seven. So what that represents is the year, the the amount of money spent in year twenty thirty one and twenty thirty two. And in likewise, the the car P two and P four, where it says eighteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty four, I took the total cost of the car. If you click on that cell. The total cost of the car is ninety three thousand, six hundred and seventy two, and I divided it by the five years to get the cost in twenty thirty two dollars. And then that way we'd have a good comparison between the lease and the purchase. So yeah, I should I should have spelled that out in a comment there and I identified, sorry about that.
No, we appreciate this. Information, Councilman Marley and. And so tonight, our goal is to get your questions so that in two weeks we can come back to this. The chief and I met this morning and you know, the first priority is providing accurate information to you guys. So we can make a good decision with respect to purchasing versus leasing. And we're not ready tonight to launch that, so if you have questions, we'd love to hear. From you tonight, if you have questions that you think of in the middle of the night. When you you're thinking about this, because you can't sleep, we would love to hear from you. So that in two weeks, we can come back to this. And I've encouraged our chief to interact with Councilman Marley with respect to his. His spreadsheet, ultimately, we want to have accurate information so that you guys can help. So questions from you tonight?
I had a couple observations and comments, so one that out of all these spreadsheets that was still missing. So I I ran one, a worksheet myself on one thing, which was, we didn't have with the current costs, we had maintenance costs. But we didn't have the current costs down and I ran that. Based on the conversation we had with Paula and what we were spending roughly for every two year or every yeah, every two years and then added the five percent. Inflator thing into that, but one of the, I think that my observation I did that was, we've been on what looks to be for four cars. An eight year rotation, so cars we keep for eight years, that drives the maintenance costs and things like that. So if we're buying a car every two years and we have four cars, that's how you get to the eight year rotation. I do think that looking at this, that is probably a little too long and I think the some of the maintenance numbers that she shows does reflect that. But also like what was just being shown there with Councilman Marley's information. So if you go chiefs on a four year rotation, you know, it's if, you know, effectively a car a year. And then we had five year on the purchase, which is what Councilman Marley's did there. You can see a fairly dramatic, the number I have, I think there might be one miscalculation on the five percent that I. I did the five percent every other year rather than I needed to include it in the off years as well. But that that said, I came out that our current cost on vehicle is running us around four hundred thousand dollars. For the same kind of a window of time we were looking at on this chart. I'd have to go back and look one more time, did I carried it to twenty thirty two, I did. So that was the number that I was seeing, that's just a rounded number at the moment, that four hundred K. You see a five eighty K number here, again, assuming only four cars, not counting the chiefs. And then we do jump to the higher number up here, which I think is the six ninety. So there's a hundred and ten thousand over the ten year period difference. From a four year rotation plan on lease to a five year rotation, six would obviously drop it a bit more. And at eight years, based on mine, which I do think is too much, we are sitting at, we would be at about four hundred thousand, maybe a smidge over that. So that was just some things that I just wanted to make noted is that these numbers didn't show what still what we were paying today.
I think another item to be aware of, Chief, you mentioned to me that the, if we go over the fifteen thousand mile. Allowance per car, it's fifteen dollars per additional mile. And we are averaging, I believe you said fourteen thousand, five hundred miles. And that's an average, that means some are more, some are less, so we do want to keep an eye on the the mileage that we have on the cars. Because if we exceed that mileage allowance, that really starts adding up fast.
And I I did a another little, some more math. So you gotta keep in mind, Briar PD hasn't been staffed up a hundred percent for a while. So I went back to. Twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen of the cars that we had. Because I think the mileage would be skewed a bit, it's it's a, it's a little bit higher, but the average miles. For our oldest cars, so that I could use the twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen. Our average miles were thirteen nine fifty, which is good, because that gives us a little bit better representation. When let's say we're more fully staffed, because right now, clearly, we we're not fully staffed. So we have cars that don't get ran as much as they should or would if we were fully staffed. So, but yes, the longer you go and I, and maybe it's a question that I'll write down. When I call FCI to say, what happens if we want to do a five year lease like Councilman Cricky said? Does our mileage allotment go up? Do we get more mileage out of that? So I I will ask that question.
All right, great. Any other questions for the?
How how many, how many cars in in that vehicle maintenance by year, two thousand sixteen through two thousand twenty two, so first quarter twenty two? How many, how many cars are accounting for those vehicle maintenance expenses? And does that include the chief's car that's been kind of sitting around?
I it, it does, so it, that includes four cars.
Four cars.
The the Taurus that the chief had driven. Obviously, you haven't incurred any cost for this new car that I have.
Right.
But the costs that were involved for, let me, I can look at that right now for you. And show you what the costs were on the Taurus, to see if that would.
Well, that's okay, I'll just factor that in as maybe a half a car or a quarter or something, okay.
The Taurus really hasn't been used.
It wasn't driven that much.
It wa- it wasn't, I mean, I think right before I came, I think they put new tires on it and some brakes and those sorts of things, but.
But they that might be accounted in here, right? Because I see those tires in here, I see their brakes.
It wasn't, because I, there's spreadsheets that Officer Otaki uses and mileage per. When things were broken and and so these are all the four cars.
Okay.
That we have.
And could we get a copy of that that revamped spreadsheet that Dave helped you pull together? I didn't see that in the packet today. So those, there's some new new math there that I'd love to kind of tinker with a little bit.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, so tonight, the goal is to. Get your questions and then update the the chief's spreadsheets and then Councilor Marley and the chief will interact. And so what what we want to do is eventually present you with one spreadsheet that everybody agrees upon. And with all the expenses and so that we can make a good decision. We have a couple of weeks to think about this. Get your questions and and you know, get them on the spreadsheet. We didn't want to come tonight acting like we knew everything, because we don't.
Right.
And we're absorbing these questions and obviously any input from you is is really welcome.
I'll I'll put my questions on paper and then rod them to you through Paula. I'll I'll put my questions on paper and then run them to you through Paula or somebody back there in the office, chief.
You you can, anybody can email me directly.
Okay.
That that would be an easy way.
All right.
And I can add those to the list and and make sure they're addressed the next time we meet. I did look at the state contract and the cutoff for purchasing cars is in two days. Now, so what that means is that we're not, we're not out of luck, but the manufacturer shut down for a couple of months to re-platform the twenty twenty three models, obviously. And so we we miss the mark as it is. So we have some time. But I just want to say that time not is not necessarily our friend because supply and demand is really bad right now. So it goes by who places their order first to see who gets the allotment of twenty twenty threes. So that's just something that we're working against. I just wanted to throw that out there.
And obviously, the city our size doesn't have a fleet maintenance facility and staff like the larger cities do that they're used to maintaining and keeping track of all the vehicles and maintaining them. We're struggling at Public Works just to keep things going there. And so obviously, we don't, we're not looking to add to their burden. So that's something when when the chief investigates cities that are using leasing, it's typically typically been smaller cities. I think Ferndale, Blaine, what other cities are using this program leasing?
Elma. Here's the list right here.
Outside of Elma, which was interesting, the others I was yeah, I wasn't quite sure we were quite apples to apples, but the Elma one was interesting, especially when you look at how many cars they have. At least they said they had. But.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think Pasco is a good representation, just showing a a decent sized agency that that uses the leasing. But yes, you know, a more comparable are those other three or four, those other four agencies. So um, there weren't any Dodges on the contract right now, which was a little deceiving for me. They're not showing the Dodge. Durango like I have for some reason. I don't know if Dodge is going to be in the game. They're going to step out or not. Normally they're there, but they aren't showing on the contract right now. So Ford is I know that Councilman Nick doesn't appreciate this, but Ford is the only option we have right now. So are there any any other questions that you you might have of me that are on your mind right now that you might forget to put in email?
I had two things. Just one, I did want to thank you for the details on the maintenance because that was an ask I had. So I do appreciate that really helping the spreadsheet. Got that down. So thank you on that. The one other thing I would say is when we you do the side by side comparisons, get that all done. I think we do and and we can caveat it with, like I said, we're the fleet rotation is a lot longer right now. But we should put what the current cost is and then what to buy. And then part of one of the formula things I can go in there is what's our rotation you'll check on if we can do a five year on the lease, what does that look like? But what we're going to have is there is going to be a step up in cost if we pull that in. And I think it just behooves to really show here's where we are. This is what it's going to be over that ten year projection or whatever we want to do. I think that is an important thing we need to reflect on this for chiefs.
Sounds good.
All right. I want to thank you for your questions and comments. Feel free to email the chief if you think of something else you'd like to know. Any other comments for tonight for this workshop? All right. Hearing none, we're going to adjourn the workshop. Thank you for your contributions and we next week is off, fifth Tuesday. We'll gather again in the first Tuesday of April. Thank you. Tonight.
Thanks.
Thanks.